Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Kitty Hawk Town Council meeting to order. It's Monday, May 5th, 2025. We're in the Kitty Hawk Town Hall in Smith Meeting Room at 6:01 PM. Thank you all for coming tonight. Those of you that are here, those of you who are listening at home. If you are able to join us, please stand and join in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Counsel, before we approve tonight's agenda, if you'll notice, you have a new updated agenda at your seat. The only addition is after the 2025-2026 budget presentation, we need to schedule a public hearing for the June 2nd meeting for our budget, and we will vote on it at that meeting. That's the only change. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. All. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Introduction of new staff. Chief, is that you?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, this manager. Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight. I'm supposed to be introducing two new employees to you. Unfortunately, one of them was not able to make it at the last minute. So I'll briefly introduce Amy Heckhaus, or reintroduce, should I say, back to the Kitty Hawk family. And Amy started with us about two weeks ago. She finished up an abbreviated field training and will be out on the road working alone here starting this week. So we are very excited to have Amy back and back in the fold with us, working with us. And secondly, I am proud to introduce to you Marissa McCormick, who joined us just starting last week. As you know, we created the new evidence and logistics technician position out of an existing position that we've had vacant for quite some time. We're really excited to write this position and try to fill it, and very pleased with the responses that we got, the people we interviewed. Marissa really stood out with her history, in a brief history of working with evidence, with the FBI and a lab there. And then I'm gonna say the military up in Dahlgren. Now, she comes to us from Fredericksburg, Virginia. She has a master's in forensics and really is just bringing a wealth of knowledge that we're looking to capitalize on here and grow this position and hope we become more efficient in what we're doing. So with that, I proudly introduce Marissa McCormick to you.
Welcome.
Welcome. It's great to meet you all, and I'm very happy to be here, to be part of this town and the police department. I'm looking forward to all that we can do with that.
Marissa, you're the first one. Welcome, and we expect you to be here for a long time.
Well, looking at your resume, you are overqualified, so you must love the Outer Banks.
I do.
We're lucky to have you. Welcome.
I will tell you that she loves us so much, I can't tell you how lucky we are that living in Fredericksburg, Northern Virginia, right, the other state of New York, Virginia, as I call it. She made this happen really quick. I was able to relocate, get down here, and will have permanent residence here in the next couple of weeks, brings down her family with her. So again, we're really excited not to welcome her only to the town of work, but the whole Outer Banks and people who live in here, so welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Good job. Public comment. Lord, has anyone signed up for public comment?
I'm sorry, I'm not having more current lists signed up for public comment.
Okay. Is anyone here tonight would like to speak during public comment about any topic, any issue during public comment? Okay. Let the record show, no one chose to speak. Counsel, you have the consent agenda in front of you. I need a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Dylan. Second?
Second.
Second, by David. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We had no items removed from the consent agenda. Item 8A, public hearing. Counsel, I need a motion to go into public hearing, please.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in public hearing regarding mini warehouse self-storage facility. Thank you, Rob. Casey, do you want to start us off, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So I'm just gonna give you, I don't know when the last time we've done one of these is, so I'm gonna give you just a brief overview of the actual process itself. Given this is a special use permit application, it is a quasi-judicial hearing. So that takes us out of the veil of legislative decisions that you are typically making with text amendments and things of that nature. One of the big differences is the evidence that's gonna be submitted is gonna be sworn testimony outside of the lawyer. The lawyer is allowed to question his client, but the applicant, if they present any evidence and any of their experts or other witnesses. To include, anyone from the town, citizens who would like to speak will be sworn. I'll go over some of just, I suppose, considerations for you guys as you're going through this process. The decision, whatever it is that you make, needs to be based on competent material and substantial evidence. To go through just each of those quickly, competent evidence, for example, any witness speaking needs to have firsthand knowledge of what they're talking about, not something that somebody told them. This needs to be something they actually have, again, personal knowledge of. Competent evidence, you often, cases go into concerns opinion testimony, which is maybe one of the more important aspects of what you guys are gonna have to take into consideration tonight. Much like an actual court hearing, opinions about what might happen in the future are not admissible unless they are given by somebody who's competent to give that opinion. Usually, these are in the form of experts, so in the, for example, most often, traffic studies, so an impact on traffic. A citizen who says, well, I think that this might have an impact on traffic, without an expert there who has performed a traffic study to present a traffic study, comments such as that should be disregarded. Now, that's an example. Property values, which I do know will be something that the applicant, I've reviewed some of the exhibits, and that's something that you guys will see tonight, coming from a certified appraiser. So that, again, would count as competent evidence. And again, these are just examples. Material evidence, essentially, you guys, Rob, as I believe attachment to in his, the materials that he presented to you guys, item 8A in your packet, Rob's write-off list, and on attachment to specifically, the conditions and standards that you guys will be considering tonight as you hear the evidence. So again, any of the evidence that you're taking into consideration needs to actually relate to these standards. That's what material evidence is. And then finally, we've got sufficient evidence, which is going to be, again, evidence that tend to support a finding that all of the standards that Rob has listed in attachment to, any conditions, as part of, made part of our ordinance, that those relevant standards are met by whatever it is that you're being presented tonight. And then that meets the burden of it being sufficient. Speaking of burdens, it is on the applicant to establish that whatever they're proposing meets all of the required conditions within the ordinance, but also the standards listed in attachment to on Rob's report. Of course, this is going, anything that you guys are considering needs to be on the record. You can't have deliberations, what you've discussed outside of tonight, what you might have even seen outside of tonight. If it's not presented as evidence, you're not supposed to be taking that into consideration. Because everything needs to be on the record. I'll just note that the NC Statute 160D 705(c), when it comes to special uses, does allow a governing board to place reasonable and appropriate conditions and safeguards in approving or in making their decision. However, any of those conditions or safeguards must relate to the standards that the ordinance provides as far as land use impacts of the proposed project. So again, all these items that Rob has mentioned in his report. And a simple majority, as opposed to in a variance where you need four fifths if you have a full board, a simple majority vote of the council would result in a decision, whether it be approval or deny. It needs to be a, it needs to be a simple majority. So I'm gonna stop there. Of course, any questions as this thing goes forward that you might have for me, you likely won't honestly have too much for me, because you're not gonna hear me talk a lot. This is about the applicant. Rob is going to give a little bit of background as to what you guys are here to consider, the application itself, but ultimately, the applicant is going to make their presentation for your consideration. And yes, any concerned citizens who are here, or any citizens who are in support, anyone may speak. It will be under oath, and just bear in mind the idea of opinion testimony versus having, again, in a traffic study scenario, having an expert present that. And I say that because in sitting through these things, many times, many citizens, it's human nature to stand up and say, well, I think this will affect traffic. Same goes for the applicant. They can't, unless they're certified in that, the applicant can't say that I think this will do something unless it's coming from someone that you guys deem to be an expert in that particular field. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rob now, and just for the record, I'd spoke with Mr. Ellis, who's the applicant's attorney prior. Hood, no issue? Or do you stipulate to having Rob's materials that he's written up and attached, do you stipulate to having those made part of the record?
Yes, we do.
All right. Thank you, Hood. Mr. Ellis, and what that means is you guys can take Rob's packet, anything attached to it, that can be part of your consideration, that is something that you guys are entitled to consider in making your decision.
Thank you. Okay, before we start, we need to have everybody sworn, come up and please be sworn if you're going to speak tonight during this public hearing, apart from Rob and the applicant and his attorney, any civilian that wishes to speak is limited to five minutes, please.
You swear that the evidence you shall give in this action shall be true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
You swear that the evidence you shall give today in this action shall be true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
You swear that the evidence you shall give today in this action shall be true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, everybody.
Go ahead and get Rob, too. Yeah.
You swear that the evidence you shall give today in this action shall be true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
And just one more time for the record, if there's anyone in the audience tonight who didn't just get sworn in that intends on speaking, you would also need to be sworn in at this time, just for the record. All right?
Thank you, Lord. Rob?
As Casey mentioned, I'll just go through a brief kind of intro. Don't worry, I'm not gonna read the whole 10 pages of standards to you. So the proposal here, the applicant requesting approval of special use permit for a 105,000 square foot mini warehouse self-storage facility. It's a 35,000 square foot footprint and three stories tall. These facilities are permitted in a planned commercial development as special use, which the conditions listed in 42-414b4. Section 42-100b2 of the zoning ordinance states that special use shall meet all the commercial site plan requirements, as well as provide a list of all adjacent property owners. In most cases, a special use will require concurrent review of a commercial site plan, citing the cost and time associated with developing a full commercial site plan. The applicant has requested to separate the review of the special use permit and the commercial site plan review. Should council grant approval of the special use permit, the applicant will be required to submit full site plans for review by the planning board and town council prior to any building permits being issued or land assistance permits. So the subject property is zone BC2 with a planned commercial development overlay. This portion of the site is currently unapproved. Butting the subject property is a separate parcel that is also part of the PCD, zone BC2, and that contains a gas station and convenience store. There are also two properties, zone BC2, containing a cabinet shop and an auto mechanic, which are not part of the PCD, right in that general vicinity. To the south is also zone BC2, is occupied by Dominion Energy. There are two undeveloped parcels butting the site to the west and north that are owned by the state and they're part of the Coastal Reserve. And then across 158 in southern shores, there's a residential development. So as conditional use findings, per the standards of section 42-100b8, in order to approve the application, council must make the findings that the proposed conditional uses, or conditional use, does not materially endanger the public health or safety, does meet all required conditions and specifications, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property, will be a public nuisance, and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, and be in general conformity with the conference of court. The attachments that you've got with the staff report include an aerial view of the subject parcel, the conditions and specifications from the different sections of the zoning ordinance that will apply to this, the appraiser report that was submitted by the applicant, and as well as the sketch plan elevations, elevation drawings and renderings that were submitted by the applicant as well. So with that, I will turn it over to that.
Rob, I have one quick question.
Sure.
Just for clarification for the public and for us, if council was to approve this special use permit, we can impose special conditions as we see fit, such as a buffer zone or whatever?
Right, I think within reason, as Casey said.
Yeah, the question, well, here's kind of what you, I mean, obviously, this is, it's entirely within your discretion to make decisions tonight, as long as those decisions are based on the evidence, the competent evidence, but also, when it comes to additional conditions or restrictions, they just need to relate to the purpose and intent, if you will, of the ordinance itself, allowing, as a special use, mini warehouses.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Counsel, do you have any questions for Rob while he's here? Okay. Thank you, Rob. Does the applicant come up, please, or his attorney?
And did anyone have any questions of Rob before Hood goes? Sorry, I should have.
I do.
Okay. So, Rob, can you come back up real quick?
My name is Hood Ellis, and I represent the applicant, which is GHK Development of New Orleans, and the owner of the property, Mr. Eddie Goodrich, which is chief in chief. I'm representing them. Mr. Collins, who is with the development, is unable to be here to do a medical procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. Rob, you're pretty familiar with this project. They've been working with you for over a year, right? And again, the planning commission unanimously recommended granting a special use permit to this.
They did.
And again, do you find anything in what you've seen that would, I mean, do you think the project, does it not materially endanger the public health and safety?
I don't know that I'm an expert to the way of.
I have to interrupt. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Do you mind speaking a little bit more into the microphone? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was asking, one of the factors that the council has to rule on is whether the project does not materially endanger the public health or safety, and I was asking Rob for his opinion on that.
And Rob has said he doesn't feel confident as an expert, but you guys are entitled to hear his opinion on the question.
Yeah, opinion wise, I would say, you know, as long as all the relevant permits and all are full and it's done in a safe manner, I don't see it being endangering the public health or safety.
And again, as far as meeting all the required conditions and specifications, you've given an exhaustive report, and you've indicated where there might be some things that have to be picked up on later permit approvals, and when they submit their comprehensive plan, but as far as anything else, you found it complied, basically?
There were, yeah, a few more minor things, like the requirement in the planned commercial development says bicycle parking devices shall be installed. That's not shown on there, but that's a fairly minor thing that can be added in there.
It is not shown on here, correct?
Right, correct. And requirement for public restrooms is not indicated on it, but that's something I think can be addressed. One, preservation of noteworthy features. You can see on the site plan where, or the sketch plan, where there's wetlands indicated, it does say, in all planned commercial developments, to the maximum degree reasonably possible, practical, practical effort shall be made to preserve the natural environment, historic sites, scenic points, large trees, and other desirable natural growths, watercourses and other water areas, and other features worthy of preservation, either as portions of public sites or open spaces, or in other such forms, but in the neighborhood. Kind of goes on from there. Other than showing the wetlands that are not being disturbed, there wasn't any identification of those features.
Are you aware of any?
No, I'm not.
All right. The other thing that, we've got Greg Born here, who's our MAI appraiser, will address the value issue, but what about the harmony? It's in a BC2 zone, is that right?
Correct.
And that's a permitted use in that?
It's a special use.
With a special use permit, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's in a good, the zone works, zoning's okay?
It's in the appropriate zoning district for special use permit. You can see in the staff report, the area in which it's located, it's comprised of some maritime forests and wetlands, small-scale commercial uses, about a 4,500 square foot cabinet shop, a auto repair shop, convenience store, elementary school, Dominion Energy facility, and a single-family residence development across 158.
Basically, is it, it's consistent with the zoning and in harmony with the neighborhood?
It's consistent with the zoning.
And how about the harmony of the neighborhood? Do you find that it disturbs that?
I won't go so far as to say that it disturbs it.
The land use plan, does it encourage this type of development in this particular zone?
So the land use plan, the future land use map is part of the land use plan. It lists this area as the invest and improve, which is a designation for areas primarily in high-traffic corridors where commercial or employment activity already exists, or where conditions create the potential for higher intensity uses and development. You've got the page excerpt attached to your staff report there. There are other aspects of the comprehensive plan there, so I think it lines up with it, but that's for, I guess, council away, as I mentioned, or as in staff report. Community goals identified in the plan, reinforce Kitty Hawk's unique, low-key coastal identity and sense of community through high-quality design, protection of natural and cultural resources, continue to protect maritime forests, floodplains, marshes, and wetlands. These areas are important for biodiversity and habitat, ecotourism, storm protection functions, and quote-unquote. So I think the comprehensive plan, I think there could be arguments to be made in both ways.
Okay, but again, this is land that's off of US Highway 158, which is a pretty busy highway.
Yes.
And again, down the road is a Home Depot and other big stores.
Correct.
And this is, again, over 250 feet off the highway. Correct?
Pierced, I think.
Yeah. And the areas that they've included in the report show that it may not, it's hardly visible from the highway. Is that true?
It appears to be the case.
So again, if there's a harmony problem, it couldn't be much of one.
I guess that's for the council to ponder.
Thank you, sir. That's all my questions.
Mayor, if I may, just ask a few little follow-ups based on.
Please, please.
Rob, yeah, a few, just a few, not many at all. During Mr. Ellis's examination of you, you mentioned a, first you said site plan, and then you said, well, sketch plan. And I was just curious, is there any difference in a sketch plan and a site plan?
I guess since the applicant's requested to separate the two, the commercial site plan review and special use permit, I don't necessarily want to refer to this as a site plan, it's more of a conceptual sketch plan, I suppose. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but if they're holding off, or wanting to separate the two, then I don't think it should be referred to as a site.
Understood. And it was, yeah, it was your words, I just wanted to get your take. Understood. And did that in any way affect your, not having a commercial site plan, did it in any way affect your ability to review and consider this project?
I don't lose, I mean, I mentioned there's a couple of the more minor parts of the zoning departments that typically would be shown in the commercial site plan, you know, septic areas, but again, it's something that can be addressed. They've got kind of an area circled for stormwater management, but we would have more detail with that as a, in the commercial site plan, but I think overall, they do, they do my duty right there.
Perfect. And just wanted to make sure there wasn't some huge difference or something, so we can keep the record straight. And Mr. Ellis also mentioned the Home Depot, and just to be clear, it's true, it's right down the road, or it is down, right is relative, right? But is it the same zoning district as where this particular project is proposed, where the Home Depot is located?
No, that's in BC3.
Is there any difference in the BC3 and the BC2? Or strike that, what would you say would be, from a land use perspective, the largest differences between the BC3 and the BC2?
So the BC3 is kind of set up for, or shopping center, commercial shopping center, the kind of big box retail stores, more, I guess more of a tents.
That's all I've got. Open it up to you guys, I don't know if y'all have any questions.
Can I ask any more questions for Rob or Mr. Ellis?
I do have a question for Rob. Rob, did you notify the applicant tonight that it was recommended to submit a commercial site plan concurrently with a special use permit?
The discussion that we had back and forth was that it's typical that we'll have a commercial site plan attached to it. If they can make a, have a valid argument as to why we can separate the two, then we can proceed that way. I guess the site, like I said, the cost and the time associated with it, we allow them to move forward with the understanding that they have to show that all those specifications are gonna be ahead.
Would you agree that one of the only reasons not to submit a commercial site plan would be if you're not proposing any physical improvements to the property?
Typically, the special use permits that come in for a use moving into an existing building is typical, typically, where you would not require a commercial site plan to be attached to.
But if you're proposing physical improvements to the property, I would think that a commercial site plan would be required concurrently with a special use permit. Is that what, your opinion as well?
I think it would give a greater level of review, being able to nail down, you know, like you mentioned, the wastewater areas, fire apparatus turnaround areas, stuff like that, where on more conceptual, I guess, we don't have that level of detail in some areas. Stuff that may not necessarily be in the ordinance, but it's typically shown.
Thank you. Dave? Rob, has anybody contacted the Coastal Reserve State of North Carolina to see if they feel like that this would... to see if they feel like that this would have any effect on their coastal reserve in the maritime forests?
They were sent the adjacent owner, adjacent property owner notifications, as were all the adjacent properties for this development. I did not reach out to them specifically, and I haven't heard anything back from them.
Mr. Goodrich, or is your attorney speaking for you?
No, Rob, do you have any further for Rob, or are you good?
Rob, did they tell you how much money it was going to cost them to do a site plan?
There was reference to full architectural plans and I don't want to call the cost, but they did provide the dollar value estimate.
You remember 225,000 for the plans and 75,000 for the engineering?
Okay.
And again, is this a permissible procedure we're engaging in to get the special use permit? Or will we commit to that level of expenditure?
I think it's kind of, council has to decide if they can make the decision based on the information provided. Typically, the commercial site plan is done with a special use permit so that we can ensure that all those specifications and conditions are being met.
But it is permissible under the town's orders to proceed like this to get a special use permit first and then to get the plan laid?
I guess it's not, it's not laid out that it can be done that way. It's typical that it's done together.
But again, wastewater, we're talking about many stories, so there's not going to be much human use of the property, right?
True.
But you would have told us that we couldn't be here, and I guess we couldn't be here.
Right.
All right, that's all my questions, man.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. More questions for Rob?
I've got none, man.
Rob, this mini warehouse we approved that could be a special use in that B C two. 40,000 square feet, and that's what we approved.
So the, that square footage reference is in the B C two district. It was not part of the text amendment to allow the mini warehouse to use it. And it lays out that no owner or tenant shall occupy a space greater than 40,000 square feet as shown in commercial site plan. Last time we were here on this, the applicants were presenting a text amendment to get that changed. And then in appealing that interpretation, and the board of adjustment overruled the staff interpretation that the, that 40,000 square foot reference in the ordinance, the board found that it's talking about footprint, not the overall building size.
And?
So that's kind of how we ended up back here tonight, is the board of adjustment.
If I remember right, Rob, if we disagree with the board of adjustments, you know, it does seem kind of, I didn't agree on just the footprint. I agreed on the square footage. Somehow it's been confused a little bit, so. If the board of adjustments thinks that that's what we did, then so be, but that's not what I think many of us thought. So is there a method of saying we don't agree with the board of adjustments? Is there a procedure, Casey?
I think the council would. It would have, would have been to appeal, and there were various reasons that the decision was not to, not to do that. To answer the question though, as for tonight's purposes, no, that can't be a factor in your deliberations, in your findings, or in your conclusions. And when I say that can't be a factor, I mean the fact that you disagree with the board of adjustments ruling. So, but again, there's other standards and things in there. You're not just, that's not the only thing, of course, that you get to consider, but correct. That that can't be a basis for a decision tonight of any nature.
Good job.
Good.
The thing that was argued that night was the definition of square footage. That was what was decided that night.
A building area.
Right.
Yes.
And not square footage.
So yeah, that just for the record, not that this is necessarily material. However, what was decided that night, the definition of building area meant lot footprint, not, as you said, the entirety of the square footage of the structure. That's right. So however many square feet the lot footprint is, and whatever our ordinance requires, the board of adjustments decision was that number of square feet within our ordinance only applies to the lot footprint, not to the entire structure. Does that make sense? Councilwoman, thank you.
The proposal has both.
I believe it does, I believe.
Proposal has 35,000.
Which would be the footprint, and then I don't want to speak for the applicant, but that would be, just since we're talking about the board of adjustments here, that would be the footprint with the, I believe, 105, unless it's been modified, being the total square footage of the building, of the structure itself, that's right.
Do we have a definition of mini?
No, if it's not found, not found within this particular ordinance allowing this as a special use, if it meets certain conditions, then no, we would not have a definition of mini.
Seem mini to me.
I suppose, I, well, again, I'm not going to speak for the applicant, so.
No, our definition for mini, mini storage facility, I think, or mini warehouse facility, it does not include square footage, so it's anything.
Can you think of something?
I've got one more question for Rob. Rob, if this was submitted to you as a plan, a plan review that did not require, that was administrative only, I don't even know if we have a process of that nature. Do you feel like the items on this plan, that what's included on this plan would be enough for you to make a determination for a site plan approval?
So the procedure for that, if this was a permitted use by right, it would be, commercial site plan would go to, still go to the planning board and council. It would be, it would be an administrative decision, meaning you'd just be basing it on what they're showing as it meets the ordinance. There, I think the items that might be kind of lacking in there, the, like I said, the minor, minor things. In the past, council has granted like a conditional approval of site plan, just that they get those corrected, that information shown right before the permits being issued, rather than, you know, denying and making it, making it revise the plan and go back to the planning board and back to council. It's kind of been handled that way.
You good, Dylan? For now, yes, sir. All right. Anything else, council? All right, I'll ask again, is anyone here tonight that would like to speak during this public hearing? If so, come up and be sworn, please. Anyone has any questions for Rob or this council? Okay, we're good. Council, anything else during public hearing?
But you're going to present?
We've got two more witnesses there.
And I think, the mayor, I think that he was referring to you guys too, not just anybody. No, no problem, no problem.
I'm waiting for you to come up.
Mr. Goodrich? All right, state your name, please, for the record.
My name is George Edward Goodrich.
All right. Mr. Goodrich, are you the owner of the property that's in, that we're talking about tonight?
I am the owner of the property.
All right. And tell me what you understand to be the history of this property.
This property was purchased from the estate of Billy Rauten. And prior to that, it was owned by an oil company. And of course, as everybody knows, there was an old gas station on the property for something like 50 years. And nobody else was able to seem, nobody else was able to work it through the vision of environmental law of the state of North Carolina and remove what was there and build a new 711 with the gas pumps and everything. And then the residual property is what we're dealing with now.
Okay. And how much acreage is there?
A little over five acres.
And how much acreage do you understand will be actually developed of that?
Less than 50%.
Okay, which is, exceeds the open space requirement of the ordinance, correct?
It does.
Okay. And tell me what you understand that Mr. Cobb and GHK are proposing on your property?
They're proposing two things. One, 10,000 square foot of retail space or office space out near US 158. And also a 35,000 square foot footprint, three stories tall, which is a storage facility that's fully enclosed, conditioned, air-conditioned, heated in the air, totally secure. Quite frankly, everybody seems to be concerned about the size of this building. Well, in reality, it's smaller than a food store, than a grocery store. And it's no taller than a single-family home in Kitty Hawk. So I've been in real estate business for a long time, and I've seen a lot of things happen. And nothing is ever as bad as everybody thinks it's going to be.
How many mini storage units are proposed for the property?
I'm not sure. I think, I'm not sure, I think 250 or something like that.
But again, it's for like a homeowner that has extra stuff that they can't fit in their house, they can store it in one of these units.
The average age of people in Dare County is 10 years more than the average person in the state of North Carolina. The average person in Dare County is 48, 49 years old, and the average person in North Carolina is 39 years old. So, yes, people eventually, and this is beginning to happen in the real estate industry now, they're downsizing, they're moving from their large house to the small house. Some of them die, they all do. And they have things that they want to store for their children and their grandchildren, whether they want it or not, but they feel that they want to have things that were theirs. And this is, the facility is also suited for commercial, like a plumber or anything, to keep his equipment and keep his materials so they won't be stolen. And he can go once a week and get what he needs, and he doesn't have to keep everything under his house for this.
And it's all accessible from the outside, the units are in the, on the inside?
Yes.
Do you believe that this, this project in any way endangers the public health or safety?
I can't imagine how it could.
And you've owned real property in Dare County for how many years?
Forty years.
Okay. And you've done other commercial developments?
Quite a few.
And as far as you know, based on the architect that prepared these plans that worked closely with Rob, is your understanding that it meets the conditions and specifications of the Kitty Hawk ordinance?
I agree that it does.
And as far as being in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood in which it's located, what would you say about that?
Well, the neighbors are Dominion North Carolina Power, the 711 store, a cabinet shop, car maintenance and repair service. I think it's, the other neighbors, some of it is the state of North Carolina, so that's all open space. I always agree that it's in harmony with where it's located.
Which is in a B C two, a beach commercial?
Beach commercial two.
Anything else you'd like to tell the board?
I don't think so.
That's all my questions.
Thanks, sir. Counselor, Casey?
No.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Right here.
Yes, sir.
John, would you please state your name for the record?
Gregory Lee Born.
And Mr. Born, where do you live?
4893 The Woods Road in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina.
Okay, so you're a resident of Kitty Hawk?
Yes, sir, I am.
Is your office also located in Kitty Hawk?
Yes, it is.
And how are you employed?
I am self-employed as a commercial real estate appraiser.
Okay. Now, can you tell us what your, what?
I have the state of North Carolina general certified license that basically allows me to appraise all property types, residential, commercial, complex issues. In addition to that, I'm a North Carolina broker, I'm a realtor, and I hold the MAI designation, which basically is a level above what was required to get state certified. In fact, it was a lot more to get my MAI than it was to get my state certification. Takes more education, more experience, more effort to get that designation. And I have 39 years of appraisal experience, virtually all of it in northeast North Carolina. I appraise a whole array of properties. I've appraised properties for all of the towns, basically all the counties, banks, individuals. I've dealt with attorneys, I've dealt with various government agencies. I've appraised a lot of, almost 40 years.
You done any estimate, how many appraisals you've done?
I've done more than 2,500, but my appraisals are not like a residential appraiser. My appraisals are big books, so.
And you also done work for the town of Kitty Hawk?
Yes, I have.
What type of work have you done for them?
I just recently appraised a police station.
All right. You were employed by GHK and Mr. Cobb and Mr. Goodrich in this case?
Yes, I was.
And what were you employed to do?
My problem to say, to solve as an appraiser, or the problem that is considered is whether the project here will have an impact on any of the adjoining, adjacent or nearby properties and whether it would be in harmony with the neighborhood and not be a public nuisance.
And as far as the effect on adjoining properties, that's to determine if this project would diminish the value of those adjoining properties?
Yes, it was.
And the packet that Rob, your report that Rob included in what's been given to the town council was dated, uh, 2024?
Yes, sir.
First we're coming here.
Yes, sir.
You've updated that?
Yes, I have.
Mayor, may I introduce you something?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Greg, if you would, just sort of take us through your process and how you did this and how you compiled it in this report.
Okay, basically what I did is I looked at the existing projects here. Primarily, I looked at the US Storage Cave right up the street here. The same folks own all the mini warehouse facilities there, right there at the Daxhead, Killable Hills line. I looked at a project in Kitty Hawk that also went on Collington Road, going into Killable Hills, is part of Killable Hills, outside the corporate limits. And what I did is to look around those properties and see if there was either an impact to either improved properties or vacant properties to see if that facility had an adverse impact or any impact at all on the surrounding properties. And I looked for sales to show that if there was a impact, the data that I gathered would indicate that there is no impact on the surrounding properties. This property in its specific position. This property and its specific position within its neighborhood would have no impact on its adjacent surrounding property.
So as far as the factor that asked whether this project would substantially injure the value of the adjoining property, your determination was no?
Yes, sir.
Did you, in your opinion, was there any negative impact at all on the adjoining property?
No, sir, not from the data that I collected, which indicates.
All right, and what about the harmony and the public nuisance part?
Given the surrounding properties, and you got the Vineyard, a large facility, like over 10 acres, you have warehouses, you have shops, you have an office, the auto repair place, the cabinet shop, both pretty old establishments. And the fact that it's surrounded by woods on basically three sides, that it would have no adverse impact, you know, out front, there is 10,000 square feet of retail space, which kind of shields the project. It's in the back of the property, the woods would remain around the property, so it's screened from the highway, you know, visible, somewhat visible, but not totally visible, from the other properties and uses in the area.
And based on your familiarity, having lived here for years, worked here for years, in your opinion, is there a need for a facility like this?
Yes, there is. I've basically appraised every facility on the Outer Banks. And except for maybe during the time of the Great Recession, occupancy has been always very hot. And there's a reason there's all those facilities across the bridge, because there's no place to do it here. And so from my work on the other projects, it's obvious there's a demand for space here on the beach. People would prefer not to drive across the bridge and deal with traffic and so forth.
Thank you, sir, that's all my questions, Mayor. Somebody else has a question on Mr. Born?
I do. I understand your comparables that you have used very well, understand how you had to do that. How many warehouse facilities have you appraised overall? More or less?
More or less, probably over my career.
In the last five years?
Probably about putting ones across the bridge.
There's one, one, two, three, there's four across the bridge, correct? You have the old ample, or I have amp, I'm sorry, go ahead, you can finish.
I would say about five.
Okay, one of them's fairly newer.
Yes, it is.
Correct, okay, and two of them switched, all three, the other three have switched hands, so when they switched hands, did you appraise those during the switch?
Actually, I appraised one of them for the property owner, for tax issues.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna go back to my question, overall, how many stores, facilities, would you say you've done in the last five years?
I'd say about, probably about, you know, because we don't have a whole lot of them down here, and they don't change hands very often, you know, maybe three to five, something like that.
Okay, and you said you used Collington Harbor as one of your comparables?
I used it, not as a comparable, because I didn't value this project.
Right.
I just looked at what impact it had, you know, the development house and surrounding properties. But yes, I looked at basically, and I looked at other ones, like the Mans Harbor, Diamond Hatters, you know, I've appraised those too, but I tried to focus here on the beach.
But do you feel like, in this particular case, where you have these other facilities that are in a general location?
Right.
Right, when I'm looking at, from a real estate brokerage standpoint, I'm looking to put a value on your property, whether it be commercial or residential. You know, you use what's beside you, and then you expand further out, right? So I'm trying to understand why you needed to go to Hatters or Collington when you have this at the foot of the bridge, but then you also have the ones across the bridge, which I feel are more closer to the subject.
Right.
So, was that just for extra meat and potatoes, for lack of better words, or is there a reasoning? I'm trying to understand the reasoning why you felt the need?
I didn't study the ones across the bridge. Basically.
And I'm not saying you're right or wrong, I just, I'm understand, I want to understand why you took the path you took.
I chose the Outer Banks because that's where our subject is.
Correct.
That's where the project is.
Please define the Outer Banks, sir.
Let him answer.
I know, please define the Outer Banks, I'm not getting my question answered.
Well, but he hasn't finished yet, just let him.
All right, go ahead.
Do a full length. Outer Banks includes Kitty Hawk, Naxhead, Killable Hills, Southern Shores. You know, Hatters is included, some people include Oprah Coke, some people include Roanoke Island. It's, you know, the definition of the Outer Banks is pretty wide.
Okay. Again, again, I'm just trying to figure out what Hatters has to do with Kitty Hawk, when you have plenty right within a seven or eight mile radius.
Okay, well, basically, I tried to focus on neighborhoods that are similar to this one right here. And that would be the Outer Banks, because we have the most dense development. You go up in Currituck, they're pretty spread out. I mean, they're populated at the end here, because people want to be over there, you know, closer to here as possible. So, but the market is a different market over there than it is here. And that's why I focus here on the Outer Banks.
So really, the other ones are just supporting data?
Yes.
Correct, that's all I was asking.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, sir.
If you get, may I ask, just to make sure I understood credentials? And I'm doing this, we know Mr. Goodrich was not, he didn't, wasn't tendered as an expert. You were.
Yes, sir.
And the field was what, one more time for the record, what field were you tendered in?
As an appraiser.
And do you hold an engineering degree, Mr. Born?
I do not.
A law degree?
I do not.
Certified, are you a certified land use planner?
I am not.
And the reason I was asking that, when you testified as to the harmony with surrounding properties, was that, and I'll try not to bifurcate this question, was your opinion that it was in harmony with the surrounding properties, was that based on an impact in value to those surrounding properties?
Yes.
Okay, and not, in your opinion, expert opinion as a certified land use planner, correct? Thank you.
That's right.
So what, so what you were referring to is just the effect on the businesses or the structures, not so much the environmental impact part of this, correct? When you say in harmony, we're not talking about with water flow and, what is talking about value? Okay, thank you. All right, Counsel, anything else? Sorry about that, we've got a technical problem going on, I think. All right, anybody else who would like to speak? Thank you, Mr. Ellis, thank you, Mr. Born, Mr. Goodrich. Anything else, Counsel, before we go back into regular session?
And that, just for everyone's application, includes questions of anyone that testified tonight. I think it's okay if you ask me some opinionated questions, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not supposed to be asserting my discretion or my opinion or interpretation of any of these considerations or standards in supplanting that for yours. So I'm limited, I guess, as to what I can do, but before you close, Mayor, just wanted to make sure there's no further questions of anybody else that testified. Of the board, by the board.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor.
If not, Counsel, I'll entertain a motion, excuse me, to go back in regular session.
So moved.
Motion made by David, second?
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we are back in regular session, Counsel, what would you like to do here? Comments, questions?
I'll comment. Being that the applicant decided to separate the commercial site plan from the standard or special use permit, I'm having trouble agreeing that meets all the conditions of the ordinance. And I'll, Casey, do I need to specify what I'm?
Yes.
Clarify?
Yes, please, if you would, if you would.
The approved comprehensive land use plan, one of the requirements, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to continue to protect maritime forests, floodplains, marshes, and wetlands. From reviewing this middle, I'm unable to understand how much land disturbance is proposed, how much wetland impacts are proposed, where the wastewater is proposed, what the grading and elevations of the site is supposed to look like, and B, and all of that I would consider in impacts to environmental. And without, without that, I'm having a hard time being able to say that that meets the conditions of the ordinance and approved land use plan.
And as I said initially, the conditions of the ordinance, and then any standards that are imposed upon PCDs or imposed by our statute, chapter 42, such as the harmony that we were just, all of those standards and conditions, you guys need to be satisfied that they are met.
So that would be included in the ordinance and specifications that need to be met?
That's correct.
Would that not be after, that tonight is to move forward with the special use permit? So that they can do all that?
So I think, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel, until, what you're trying to say is, based on what you've got here in front of you tonight, you can't get to that step because you can't tell whether all the conditions of the ordinance are met.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I understand there's a cost associated with the design, I fully understand that. However, I think that's the name of the game in development, is you put a little forward, understanding that you have to invest in it. I do understand that's a significant cost.
Anything else, Dylan?
That's all I have.
I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna stand and go last.
Okay, okay.
Jeff? I'm good.
Charles?
Back to me. I don't personally have a problem moving it forward, yeah, I voted for it the first time. You know, I don't know of any other place for that to go, really, unless you're heading north, you're not really going to, it's all gonna tie into basically looking like one property, more or less. I mean, you can't ask for a better buffer on the east side of that area right there. In fact, it's completely, almost circled around and buffering. I don't disagree with Counsel, someone tell it either. Generally speaking, and I had to have some questions answered before I got here today, you know, this is a, correct me if I'm wrong, a two-step process.
That's correct.
Right, so we're not approving it to be built tomorrow, we're just allowing it to move forward to get to the step where they spend the $275,000. And then at that point, do we not get to put restrictions on, not restrictions, but at that point, do we not then get to really comment on what we need to be commenting on?
Well, are you talking conditions, like additional conditions?
I'm gonna rephrase my words. At that point in time, do we not get to critique certain aspects? That's where they have to fall in line with anybody else who submits a site plan for a commercial development.
So the specifics of the site?
Correct.
Is that what you're talking about? I see no reason why you couldn't comment at that stage, absolutely.
Because we're not approving a permit tonight to start construction tomorrow. We're pushing it forward so they can spend more money to get to that point, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry, I'm missing it, but what'd you say, Counsel?
Tonight, again, we're allowing, we're voting to move this forward so that they can start spending the money on this, on everything they need to come back to Counsel.
Correct, Dave, so any monetary amounts that have been discussed tonight that are associated with full commercial site plan review, yes, they would clearly have to spend that money, absolutely.
Because I agree.
As for the second step?
Because I agree with Counsel, Tillett over here, with what he's saying, you know, you draw site plans for a living, so you know it more than anybody. But I don't know that I would spend $300,000.
How else, how are we supposed to, part of the special use permit process of one of four items that need to be met is, does it meet all required conditions and specifications? And I'm unable to say that it meets all of that.
That I don't disagree with.
With the material at hand.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, I would disagree with you on that. So, I, again, I'm in favor of moving it forward, I might be, again, the only one sitting up here, I don't know where else it can go in Kitty Hawk, personally speaking. I personally have a unit across the bridge that I pay $200 a month for. Now, is it more expensive to be here? I don't know. But I know that there's a shortage of places for people to store their items. I was lucky enough to get one unit across the bridge. So there's a need for, I'm not gonna get into logistics of appraisals and this, that, and the other, I couldn't care less personally. The fact, in my mind, what matters is, does it fit the area with flow? And I personally believe that it does. And I could be in a minority again, but I have no problem with, with, I have some things I'd like to suggest on lighting and different things to that effect, but we're not there yet. So I can't even get into that side of it yet, because it's not been moved forward. Okay, so that's where I'm at with it. And if everybody's done talking about, there's not even more discussion, then I think at this point, there needs to be a motion made.
Anything else, Counsel, any more conversation, discussion, questions? David Wright on, if anyone wants to make a motion, they have the time to do it.
I'm gonna make it, I'm sure it's gonna end up made the same way as it did before. I moved to grant approval of the special use permit to allow many warehouse stores, facility, and associated retail building located in the PCD at partial one, excuse me, 01039903. Town Council finds that the proposal meets the conditions of section 42-100B8, as well as section 42-414B4.
Thank you, David, do I have a second? Call again, do I have a second, Counsel? All right, Casey, we've got a motion, we do not have a second, so the matter?
So that dies.
That dies.
Now, I will say, usually that leads to denial of what's been presented, but there's a nuance here in that there are additional conditions and things that you guys could propose that are not currently being shown. So if one of you would like to make a vote to include anything additional, then I believe that would be in order, but if not, then I would say that this fails.
Charles? Jeff?
I'm good.
Do I have anything, Dylan?
Explain to me what, again, what are we talking about?
Any conditions that would go, that we could go forward?
So if there are other reasonable conditions outside of what's listed in the ordinance, for example, that are tailored or substantially related to the intent of the ordinance itself, you can propose those, right, in addition. So what I was saying is generally, if a motion to deny, or if it was approved, vice versa, a motion to deny is made and it dies, then it fails, thus it's not approved. Does that make sense? However, since you can have the discretion to add additional, I just don't want to However, since you can have the discretion to add additional, I just don't want to take that off the table, if that's something that you guys want to consider. Because it wouldn't be a flat denial of, if you added conditions of what you've got here tonight.
No, I don't have any additions to make.
Okay.
So just as, so I understand it, as Councilman Tillitt, what the question was on 42, I'm sorry, 42-100B8. Is what he was hung up on, is that a place for him to bring up his concern?
What is what a place?
Sure. What he said, you cannot understand.
That, oh, because it does not meet all required conditions and specifications. And then I do believe, and I want to do this for the record and ensure that that's what these decisions are based off of, of course, because it's gotta be a rational nexus, but which particular condition were you referring to?
Condition B, does not meet all required conditions and specifications.
And then those conditions and specifications, were those the one you referenced during your deliberations?
During my deliberations.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
And is that your, well, is that what you were referring to as you were deliberating? And you've answered that?
That's correct.
So is that a place to put a condition on it now or not?
Well, I mean, if somebody wants to make that motion, yes. Yeah.
So if I were to retract my motion and include his concern, is that, is that?
Well, I mean, you'd be putting words in, I mean, I'd make.
I'm not putting words in his mouth.
I'd say that I'd make, make sure you understand the, maybe I'm confused. I don't know.
I don't know.
Is that the only thing that you were concerned about?
That's correct.
Right.
But I think what he's saying is he's not able to determine that all the conditions and specifications have been met based on the evidence presented.
That is correct.
So there wouldn't really be a scenario where, all right, well, let's approve. Now, you, there could be a continuance, and then there could be.
Can it not be contingent upon satisfying?
Well, according to what I'm hearing here, again, remember what I said in the beginning, we're based on what we got tonight, right? And if Commissioner, Councilman Tillitt is saying that he doesn't believe there's enough there, and that is the basis for his non-vote, I suppose it, you know, again, within your deliberations, do you, do you, Mayor, Councilman Pro, and Councilwoman Walker concur with Mr. Tillitt's comments?
I do. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. It'd be easier to have a second to David's motion. Do we either approve or deny what we got before us tonight?
I think for the record, what would be most clear is if Commissioner, Council, sorry, I get my KDA agent, Kitty Hawk, Councilman Tillitt, if you would make the motion based on, and actually give the basis for, and let's go.
So we still have an open floor now that the first motion was not made?
Yeah, in this particular.
There is no closure?
Correct.
Am I retracting mine?
No, yours died.
Yours did.
Still died.
Can I ask a question, Casey?
Yes.
Can some of these conditions that we're concerned about be done without the expensive site plan? Like, you know, one of my main hangups is, is it in harmony? If somebody said the water's gonna flow right and with the nature part, and it's not gonna cause some stormwater, I'm worried more about the flooding and stuff like that. Other than that, you know, I do agree with Dave, that it is a good location for a facility like this, but I don't have the information to know. I would, you know, just like to know a little bit more about where the water's going and what effect it's gonna have on the people. That's, that's it with me. And I don't know if that detail is a whole site plan or just environmental.
I'm just saying, we can't even get there until we push it to that place.
You can, you just have to invest in your project a little bit more.
Well, that's true. Correct.
You can get there.
Right.
And many applicants do in towns all over the place.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
So you need some, all right. Mr. Mayor, I move to deny the proposed special use permit for a mini warehouse storage facility located at parcel number 010399003. Due to not meeting all the required conditions and specifications, part of the.
As per forty, chapter 42-100B8, Councilman?
As per 42-100B8 special use permit requirements.
Thank you, Dylan. Do I have a second to Dylan's motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. All, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to deny, deny, pass four to one. Finally got there. Thank you, Council.
And what will happen now, guys, is I will prepare, it has to be a written order, generally, and I will give it to Mr. Ellis. There's no appeal rights, anything of that nature that begin running until there is a written order approved by you guys. So between now and next meeting, I will present that to Mr. Ellis, see if we can come to an agreement on it with the idea, bringing it back to you guys as an agenda item where you can approve the contents of the order as per your results and decisions just now.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
That's what we need. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, folks.
Thank you for your hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council. Okay, item 9A fiscal year budget, Melody.
Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Good evening, Council, members of the public. We are here to present our fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. This is the first step in the budget approval process. This, after today, the budget will be available for public inspection, and then we will have a public hearing and have a council vote, we hope, the first meeting in June. So our budget theme this year is defining a path forward. And just to review, a budget is a comprehensive plan outlining anticipated revenues, like our tax revenue, and proposed expenditures, like spending on services for a specific period, often for a fiscal year, that reflects the government's priorities and policies. And our budget reflects our goals from our mission and our vision of community involvement, family values, responsible use of town resources, preserving the town's history, enhancing natural resources and promoting resiliency, striking a balance between the needs of our year-round residents and our visitors, and continuously improving the quality of coastal living. When our lead team sets out to talk about their department budgets and what ultimately becomes the town budget, we consider efficiency, we try to maintain expected services, and we also think about sustainability. What does our future look like? We need to allocate funds for capital improvements and long-term projects and infrastructure. So those are the things we consider. And the three things I'm gonna talk to you about tonight are our reevaluation, everybody I think knows about the property tax revow, our revenue stream, and our expenditures. So Dare County did their 2025 property revaluation. Their goal was to do it every five years. So our townwide property values increased. This current fiscal year, the townwide property ad valorem was 1.558383934, a billion, one and a half billion. With the property revaluation, the property values for this year are 2.4 billion. So what we have to do first is calculate a revenue neutral tax. What would generate with the new value, what would generate the same amount of taxes? And it was calculated at 19 cents, and the municipal service district was six cents. Using the revenue neutral tax and revenues less requested expenses left a shortfall of $746,000. In this budget, our projected revenue is $12.5 million. We are proposing a townwide tax rate of 22 cents, which includes the 2 cent allocated to beach nourishment and the MSD, which is revenue neutral, at 6 cents. Our current tax rate is 30 cents, with 3 and 1/2 cents dedicated to townwide beach nourishment, and the municipal service district tax rate is 10 cents. The proposed tax rate is 3 cents above revenue neutral, and just everybody knows, one penny generates $248,593. Our projected expenditures, our balance has to be budgeted, so it is 12.539, the same as expenses. Personnel benefits is the largest cost for the town. Operations is 4.1. Maintenance and repairs is just close to 400,000. Our capital outlay this year is 674,000, and the transferred capital reserve is 493,000. That is a 4.8% increase over last year's budget. The budget does not use any fund balance to balance the budget, which means we're leaving our savings alone. Currently, as of May 2025, our unassigned fund balance, meaning it's not allocated toward any project, is 3.1 million. And we also have an emergency fund set aside for emergencies at 3.5 million. So those remain intact. In our 2526 budget, the highlights are a 3% pay plan adjustment and a step increase for all staff. We are adding two new full-time sworn police officers, and we are changing our health insurance provider, and we are experiencing a flat renewal because of that change. We are replacing playground equipment at Paul Pruitt Park and staffing an additional lifeguard stand south of Blairiot Street. We are also working to paint and put a roof on our medical sod of the building at 5200 North Browington Highway. Things that we are gonna do with our capital funds, we're gonna, as I said, roof repair at 5200, replace the playground equipment. We need to replace vehicles, $40,000 of police equipment, fire vehicle replacement, fire bunker gear replacement, fire equipment, street resurfacing, which comes from the state, 172,000, and we are purchasing an Ocean Rescue UTV vehicle. Things we're setting aside money for, we're putting aside $493,900 for IT equipment, finance software HVAC replacement at the fire station, our caterpillar backhoe replacement, rehab of firehouse kitchen, the land use plan update, police in-car radios, our fire truck replacement, and then $217,000 goes into beach nourishment. In conclusion, I just want to say thank you, Council. We have talked about this, and talked about this, and talked about this, and it's not something we take lightly at all. And it's been a group effort. Everybody's been involved in this. So I really want to thank you, I want to thank our lead team and their staff to making this a really, I think, sound budget and giving us a sound financial future. The budget aligns with our core values and our goals, and I think it ensures that we meet the needs of our community. So I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Melody.
Stay here for questions?
It's obvious, a lot of hard work went into this. We've had discussions, I've had discussion with each council member, some other ideas had come up, but nothing can happen because we're at the 22 cent proposed rate, and that's where we're gonna stay. If we want to do anything else, we're gonna have to go above that number. And I don't think there's, I don't think there's a whole lot of, what I gather, interest in doing that. We had spoken about a fire truck, fire truck for the future. I think everybody kind of mentioned that, that I talked to, but I am hoping for discussion while Liliana and Melody are here. Y'all have, y'all have done outstanding on your work.
Thank you.
Charlotte? Jeff?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think it's a, I think it's a good, good, we, we tried to work with everybody. We, we were able to give everybody a step raise and percent, I mean, we're trying to pay off some big items this year, and hopefully we can trim, you know, on some of the things that we're paying for this year and get some things paid off, and we can move forward in the purchase of, of putting aside for a new truck so that we're not hit all at one time. I do, I've talked with Dylan, and I think both of us, you know, we had talked about, you know, maybe the need to go ahead and start setting aside, which would require to, to raise the taxes, and, but during the budget, the conversation was if we can wait one more year, then the possibility that that might happen next year, I don't know. But I'm happy with the budget that we've set this year.
And I want to point out, that's a second, we're saving, we're almost there with one fire truck, but next we have to start saving for a ladder truck. So that's the next thing, that, that's what they're talking about now.
And we heard $2 million? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Charlotte. Dylan?
I agree. I'm happy with, with where we landed with this. The 22 cent tax proposed tonight, I do have some concerns about saving for that $2 million fire truck. That being said, I'm the last one to want to increase taxes. If we were to do such a thing, I would want to dedicate that money specifically to a fund for the new fire truck. If we want to revisit it next year, that's all right with me as well. I'm a planner, I like to think ahead, and that's all, my concern is making sure, as of right now, it doesn't seem to, it doesn't appear to me that we are going to meet a target goal of $2 million by the time we need that fire truck. That is my concern. That and, yeah.
Going like this, we will not.
Correct.
About leaving money on the table.
And there's shared revenue. I learned this as a new councilman. There's such thing as shared revenue. That's a combination of the occupancy tax, the land transfer tax, and the sales tax in Dare County. And that's divided up to each town by the percent of property taxes that the county, that each town does. So when other towns increase their taxes, our share of property taxes becomes smaller, which is fine with me. However, that means our share of the shared, our proportion of, our participation of the shared taxes goes down. So.
Very few people know about that.
Very few people know about that, and that's, that was new for me to learn as well.
And that's where we've been in years past, too. Everybody ran us or go up, and we didn't.
Correct.
And we suffer.
And if we're, if we can budget that, then I'm okay with it. I just, I have concerns about the fire truck, that's all. If we want to visit that next year, then I'm more than fine with that.
Yeah, Dave?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, too. We definitely need to keep that on, in mind for next year, that fire truck.
You know us, we'll call it that.
And it's also my understanding from Liliana that we, should the need arise that we need that fire truck, we can put a special tax just for the fire truck. we need that fire truck, we can put a special tax just for the fire truck that disappears once the fire truck is purchased. And that could be a great plan to go with, if should that need arise.
All right, any more conversation about this, counsel?
Did I say anything?
Everybody's good?
I just wanted to know, did I say?
I called, and you didn't say anything.
Jeff did.
I know what you're thinking, spit it out.
Well, I just think it would be better to go up another cent, if not two, and dedicate that money straight to the fire truck. We order that truck now, we get it at today's price, not 200, not 2 and 1/2 million dollars, and we have to have it by 2030. And I just, I think, rather than come back and ask you again, and ask again, and I just think you get what you... You go ahead and bite the bullet and get what you need, and save for that truck, and save for that. There's not a soul in Kitty Hawk that doesn't want that fire truck to come to their house if they need it.
Do we know what the other towns are going? So do... I mean, we know each one?
We don't know specifically, but Southern Shores and Duck are both looking at 5 to 6 cents.
Yeah.
And they don't say anything. It's probably a penny, and killed Al Ho's mom.
It's what?
Silent.
Not saying anything.
And that's typical.
Okay.
So we're not going to really... So we really don't know our shared revenue right now?
No.
So we're assuming it's going to be lower, but we don't know, correct?
Correct.
And we're assuming that based on the two towns that you think, that we understand could be going to 5 or 6 cents?
Yes. And that's been...
Now, if two towns go to... I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, 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 but that's pretty much confirmed, Southern Shores, because of their new fire department, and Duck has a public safety project that they're trying to work on.
Now, is that a special tax?
I don't know the details of it, but that's what the town managers have shared.
So if two towns go 5 or 6, two towns go 1 or 2, and we're at 3, shared revenue may not change.
Maybe not.
There's a chance it may not change.
It's hard to predict until...
You're not going to know until it comes out.
Yeah.
You're not going to know until it comes out.
It's an unknown, but if you don't...
But I do think we all have a better understanding of it now, and we kind of know what more to expect, you know? So I feel good about the progress that we've made this year.
And counsel, keep in mind, we're getting ready to set a public hearing for that meeting. We can still discuss some more of that meeting. When we leave that meeting, we need to have it approved, though.
Yes, please.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Counsel, I need a motion to schedule a public hearing for the budget presentation for our next meeting, please.
So moved.
Motion made by David to schedule a motion, public hearing for June 2, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dylan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. No old business. Time manager, Melody?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind everybody that May 20 is the last day to schedule a large item pickup, and then we go on hiatus for the summer and start back in September. Dare County Hazardous Waste Event, which is extremely well-attended, will be this Thursday here at Town Hall between 9 and 3. It is free, and you can bring motor oil, and paints, and varnish, and fluorescent light bulbs, and all kinds of things, and here in the parking lot.
What was that, all day on?
9 to 3. And then, give you an update on the police station. The power's been turned on, and the crew is turning on lights on each circuit, and electrical panels should be fully lit up tomorrow. All lights, I already said that will be on tomorrow. Flooring, which consists of carpet, resilient vinyl tile, and ceramic tile, will begin being installed in the next week or two. The inside overhead inspection is scheduled for Thursday, so once that's complete, they can start putting in the ceiling panels. We expect the construction trailer to be moved by the end of the week, so that the final concrete pour and the grading can begin. We are expecting furniture to arrive and be installed on June 2, and tentatively anticipating a mid-June moving date.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you. Casey has split on us. David?
I don't have anything.
Dylan?
I don't have anything either, Dan.
Charlotte?
I would like to say a special thank you to the Fire Department and the Police Department for the help I received last month. And I... Everybody was timely, and they couldn't have been better. So I really appreciate all that help. Thank you.
Well, see you, Charlotte. Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, I'd like to thank all the department heads and all the staff, Liliana, especially for all your hard work on the budget. As Melody has said, it's a tough thing to... For us to sit down and hash out numbers, and we try to do the best we can here to keep your taxes as low as we can, but provide you with the services that I think you deserve and you really need. And I hope you all are happy with our budget. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jeff. Lieutenant Hems and the Police Department, thank you for the great skate park day. Jeff, you showed up. It was a, I think you said, one of the biggest turnouts you'd had in a long time. So y'all did a great job, gave away some good prizes, too. While we're on the police, it's National Police Week coming up. May 15 is National Police Officers Memorial Day. Chief Tally, your firefighter's proclamation, thank you for what you and your staff do, too. Wonderful. I've been a member of this council for 12 years, going on 12 years Jeff and I came on together. Eight years as counsel. This is my first term as mayor, will be up in December. 12 years is long enough. I will not be filing to run for reelection as the mayor of the town of Kitty Hawk. I will have more to say on this later. And if there's no further discussion, I need a motion to go into closed session, counsel.
So moved.
Motion made by Dave. We're going into closed session to discuss our time manager's evaluation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeff. All in favor? We are in closed session. Folks, thank you for coming tonight.